The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
April 10th. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item, we're going to introduce ourselves, starting with my far right.
Joan Smith, Board of Finance.
Mike Freeman, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelpie, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Michael Moth, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Jake Kauyua, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Josh Maderos, City Council.
And we have our staff from the City Clerk's office with us as well. Thank you. Our first item?
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on March 13th, 2018 adjourned to March 14th, 2018.
Any comments or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item on our agenda is the recognition of the Bristol Eastern High School wrestling team, who has won their second Class L state championship. As you can see, this is a large team. And they have worked from day one, when their season starts in November, through that last day in February, worked hard every day at practice. But not only do they work hard at practice, this team has an over 93% academic eligibility rate, thanks in part to Coach John Benoit, who I did see here, who helps with the after-school study hall. So academics and athletics have combined to be a really great thing for Bristol Eastern. And it's the first time, I believe, that there has been repeat Class L champions. We actually have four state champions, and I think I see three of them in the House. If they'd like to just step forward and be recognized, Diego Trinidad, Mikey. Okay, and we have some... We also have several others who placed in the Class L, if they would also like to step forward. Carson Sasu, in the House. Okay, so, tonight we're here to recognize you, and I thought it was important to do so at the joint board meeting, because not only do we, as the City Council, support you as representing the city, but the Board of Finance plays a very large role in financing the education budget, of which athletics is a part. Now, we know, especially based on the support shown here by all of your coaches and many of your parents coming here, that this is a larger team effort than the one you put forward every night when you get on the mat at practice and for your matches. Your parents support you, the school supports you, the team parents, the booster clubs support you. And we also know that, in addition to the allocation that Athletic Director Cassin provides to the wrestling team, the All Sports Booster Club and all of the fundraising that goes on actually supplies almost an additional $10,000 for you to remain competitive and do your tournaments out of state and everything that has made you the champions for the last two years. So for all of those volunteers involved, the athletic department, the school, and the parents who work those endless nights at the concession stand, the shout-out is for you as well. Thank you for all you have done. I'd also like to recognize your head coach on being recognized as the Class L Coach of the Year, for obvious reasons. Congratulations, Coach Lishness. So we do have an official proclamation that we are going to have presented to you. And I'd like you to bring this back to the school, so that it will be a commemoration of this season and the success that you've had. And I'll just read the final paragraph, that "We are recognizing the Bristol Eastern High School Wrestling Team and Coach Bryant Lishness for utilizing their skills, energy, enthusiasm, and sportsmanlike conduct to bring positive recognition to Bristol Eastern High School, the community of Bristol, and the state of Connecticut." Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all the parents who have come. I am also fortunate to be part of this wrestling family at Bristol Eastern, and I know how difficult it is with those late-night practices and the cranky boys who come home, who most of them can't eat. So I know that we're all happy that that part of the season is over. I'd also like to commend all of you who are multi-sport athletes. And I also see Noah Piazza in the back, who was at the Scholar-Athlete banquet last week, representing wrestling. Congratulations, Noah, for that honor as well. And I can't let this night end without saying that I'd like to also recognize Board of Finance Commissioner Mike Fiorini from Bristol Central, a wrestler himself and state champion, who has now had to sit through Bristol Eastern being recognized. How does that feel, Mike? So now we're just going to take a two-minute recess. All of you are very welcome to stay for both of our meetings tonight. But for those of you who might have other things to do, we'll take a recess for you to be able to exit the chambers. And thank you so much for taking time to come here tonight. To our calendar, consent calendar. And I'll turn it back over to Therese.
There are four items on the consent calendar. Three A's, transfer $27,070 within the sewer operating and assessment fund. Three B is to transfer $50,000 within the equipment building sinking fund for a network fiber optic switch. Three C is to transfer $20,700 within the general fund from Board of Finance professional fees to the general fund contingency account. And three D is to make an additional appropriation of $724,770 within the special grants and donations fund funded by donations and contributions.
Second?
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Four, to transfer $5,500 from the general fund contingency account to personnel's operating budget for advertising and pre-employment exams.
So moved? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, to rescind the $325,000 appropriation for the Board of Education schematic drawings within the equipment building sinking fund.
Second? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is to transfer $255,558 within the general fund, $112,185 from contractual obligations, and $143,373 from the general fund contingency account for local 233, 1338, and fire contract settlements.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And item seven is the monthly revenue and expense report, presentation by the Controller.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, spring will be here this week, so I hear. The weather will be nice on the weekend, so I hope you all have a good weekend. Just a couple of things to report. I did want to just talk about revenues a little bit. You know, it's getting towards that time of the year, we're in April. We're going to start looking at the revenues coming in and hope they come in pretty strong. Because as you know, I've been reporting the state revenues. We did have a significant cut this year. So some of the revenues over the past that have come in relatively strong compared to budget are our tax revenues. And right now, as I report, I'm anticipating conservatively that we will achieve a $1 million surplus over what we had budgeted overall. So I think that's due to a couple of factors. I think at one joint board, I may have talked about the motor vehicle supplement billing being more than we had anticipated. So that's a primary factor in the surplus on the tax revenues. And then overall, you know, our tax collector does an awesome job collecting with our tax collection rate. Our licenses, fees, and permits, we have already exceeded our budget by approximately 6.2%. So we're about $69,000 over our budget right now, primarily due to building permits. And conservatively, if everything comes in according to how they have in the past, we could exceed our revenue estimates by about $250,000 in that revenue category. Investment earnings, I've reported previously that that has been coming in very well. The investment earnings, we've been earning a little bit better interest rate. Interest rates have been going up. And then we have also had a better cash flow, because we did issue some bonds last year to take care of some cash flow issues with the capital projects. So right now, conservatively, I'm looking at about a $400,000 surplus over budget on investment earnings. So that will all help us as we try to cover the state revenues that we lost last year of about $3.1 million. So overall, you know, we'll keep a good watch on that until June 30th, with just under three months left of the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, I think I did report last month that in the public works area, that is one area that we are watching closely, primarily for snow operations. I know there were some areas that we identified as probably needing transfers before the end of the year, fleet motor vehicle parts, repairs and service, and the streetlight account. And I know the Public Works Director, we've been working on doing some transfers that the Board of Finance will probably see at their next meeting. Board of Education continues to provide monthly updates to the Board of Finance. We have received the excess cost grant of about $3.2 million. We anticipate we'll receive approximately another $900,000 in the last payment. It's about $1 million less than what we had anticipated. So that is running lower than expected, lower than anticipated. And the Board of Ed is still anticipating a $1.6 million deficit through the end of the fiscal year. I know many of you have attended the budget meetings. The Board of Finance had their last workshop last night. They will be recommending their budget at the April 24th meeting. And then it will go to the Joint Board for May 21st for adoption. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
I believe Commissioner Burns had emailed a question. Did you?
Yeah, I didn't check my email to see if I got the answer.
You did. It was in response to the legal fees on the Green Hill School. To date, we have spent $58,000. And the appropriation was $100,000 out of that fund for that. And if you have any additional questions, the Corporation Council can answer that.
Construction cases are very complicated. And we've been following it very closely. We do have outside counsel, as you know. We just finished the first phase of the discovery process on February 28th. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Lacy, we may see a little lull for a while. There was a lot of motions and so on, but we are nowhere near... I mean, this is a high-stakes case. So I will say that one of the good things... One of the first things that I'd asked this board to do when I became the Corporation Counsel was to allow me to purchase some software, which is helping us or will help us a great deal in answering e-discovery requests, having to do with emails. And you allowed us to... You gave us a special appropriation. And I think that in the long run, that's going to save us a lot of staff time and money. And when one of our outside counsel requests us for all the emails on a particular, you know, matter that is being litigated, that we will be better able to get that to them in a format that's searchable. And so I do thank you for that.
When we win this case, will we be recouping the legal fees?
No, unfortunately. But again, I mean, we're the plaintiffs here. So we're seeking to have things made right. I mean, this involves a school, it's a very serious matter. And there seems to be a lot of finger-pointing amongst the defendants as to who's really at fault. We don't care, we just want to be compensated and it done correctly.
I have a quick question before you. Why wouldn't we seek recuperation of the legal fees?
Well, the legal system is such that only if it is provided for in a contract or in a statute can you actually obtain legal fees. For example, if we were to find that there was a Connecticut unfair trade practice or something of that nature, we would certainly make the claim. But in this particular case, it looks like it's a straight contractual issue. And there is no such provision that allows us to seek legal fees.
But going forward, would that be a reasonable thing to expect to be included in future contracts, the ability to recuperate that money?
That's a tough thing to get in contracts. I don't think you would likely see that. And, you know, the one thing that we do have is we do have... We have a bond, you know, to further protect us in case one of the defendants should file for bankruptcy or whatever. But no, that's not usually going to happen, unfortunately.
I mean, is it against regulations to include that? I mean, why wouldn't we even attempt to do that? Because obviously, we're not going to stick it in there if we don't try. I'm just curious as to what precludes us from including those things?
I think the ability or the willingness of the contractors to sign an agreement of that nature. I can't think of one that would do that and risk that kind of a... And then, the other thing is, you know, you'd have to assign fault and blame. And they would probably litigate over that as well, too. So it's not really... It doesn't happen in contractual cases. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions of our Controller? Okay. Is there any other business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll begin the council meeting in about three minutes. Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to start our City Council meeting, our regular meeting, for Tuesday, April 10th. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the City Council members to introduce themselves, starting on my far left.
Josh Maderos.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
Peter Kelly, Second District.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. Thank you for joining us for our meeting tonight. For our opening ceremonies, our first item is a moment of reflection. And tonight, I would like to ask those of you to reflect upon the families in Canada who lost their children in that bus crash, as well as the many families actually in Bristol this week, three of whom come to mind, who have also lost children. And as I'm sure all of you can imagine, it doesn't matter if your child is in their 60s, 50, or 42. It is a tragic loss for the families that are left behind. Thank you. Okay, Therese?
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on March 13th, 2018, adjourned to March 14th, 2018, and special City Council meeting on March 1st, 2018.
Move it.
Second?
Discussion on the two sets of minutes. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is public participation. And the nonprofit spotlight for today is the Agape House. And Chris is here. Thanks. If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Certainly. I'm Christine Thebarge. This is my husband Eugene Thebarge. And we run the Agape House, which is a Christian not-for-profit ministry working and operating in Bristol. We serve the homeless and people in need. We're located at 43 School Street, which is a wing of Bridge Community Church. Also, I always hear people say, "The old nursery school." So it's right around the corner. Just to give you a little history, Eugene and I worked in various ministries out on the street since 2014. And it was really important to us to develop relationships with the homeless and people in need within town. And in 2016, we're actually given the use of a building for a year, paying utilities. And what we did is we took that time with that building and said, "What did we see in the need in the two years that we were working on the street?" And that was having a warm and cooling center and a place to go. And there's another organization, Brian's Angels, that's open in the afternoon. And we found that the morning hours were in need. So we opened initially a day with volunteers, and then moved up to six days a week. So we're open from 8:00 to 12:00 daily. We have seven different ministries. And so if you envision a wheel, Agape House is in the center, seven spokes. And then the outside ring is the people who we serve. So we have a day center, which, again, acts as a warm and cooling center. We also have coffee on all the time, breakfast. We also have a phone. So if people don't have access to a phone or have to wait on hold for social services, we can help with that and coach along. We also have a computer. And people do research for jobs, apartments, looking up meetings, recovery meetings, things like that. We have a prayer ministry. So we have prayer, as well as being open during the day. On Tuesday nights, Bible study on Wednesday nights. We have a clothing room. And we take in all sorts of clothing. So we're serving adults, and we also are taking in some children's clothes. We understand that there's a need in town. So we get emails, phone calls from, you know, the family centers and the schools and different organizations, so we can help with what's donated. We also, as people are getting homed, we have connections with the food pantry out of Hillside Community Church. And we can, once they get home, also help with the food portion of it, life skills ministry, to help job search. And then, once people get homed, also do budgeting and things like that. Recovery is another big piece. Sometimes people are looking to get into a facility for a bed. They're looking for detox. Sometimes they're just looking for a meeting that day, or they need one quickly in an hour. So we try to really support that and get people to just a good place that can help with that need. Again, as people are homed, we have a couple of different furniture places within town that can help make that house a home. Yeah, donated furniture. So the future of the Agape House, at some point, we're looking to put everything under one roof. We are run completely by volunteers and donation. Again, when we got the building, we did become a 501(c)(3). Our website is theagapehousebristol.org. And Facebook is theagapehousebristolct. And I tell people, "Come on by and visit, anytime, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 12:00. The coffee's always on." And the folks that we have come visit us, the crew, always love a new ear to talk to. So please, feel free to stop in.
Thank you very much. And it's great that you're participating in the Bristol Cares as well, so that we can connect all the nonprofits who are serving various aspects of our community. We actually have a city employee who saw that you were on the agenda and left a bag of clothes that I left in the hallway outside, if you want to grab it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
The next member of the public who has signed up is Ed Dutchko from Lewis Road.
Hi, Ellen. Hello, everyone on the board. I really have nothing to say tonight, if everything's good. But just hearing that, I guess there is a need, because I see it every day. I do see it every day. I saw it today, like when I was at Price Chopper. So that's nice. I've got nothing to say tonight, except thanks for talking on Thursday. And that's it. That's all I've got to say, was good conversation.
And you owe me a piece of information?
Yes, yes, I do. You can tell I don't look at my emails. I saw it half hour before I came here. But tonight, I'll be on the lookout for an orange convertible Volkswagen. That's a convertible with distinguishing features.
Thank you.
Inside joke.
Okay, that's it for public participation. We're going to move on with announcements. And before we begin with the council members, we do have a new item on our agenda for employee recognition as appropriate each month. And this week actually marks National Library Workers' Recognition. So I'm going to turn it over to Peter Kelly, who is our liaison to the library board and for some recognition of our library staff.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I have a proclamation in recognition of National Library Week 2018. And it reads, "I, Ellen Zappo-Sassu, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 8th to 14th, 2018, as National Library Week in Bristol, Connecticut. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's available at your library, engage with your librarians, and use your library card."
Thank you. Okay, and Councilman Mills?
Yes, thank you very much. This is a month old, but I wanted to make sure we brought some attention to it. This is to recognize Mark Thomas, our marketing director. Mark recently was recognized by a national PR news social media group for the Movers and Shakers Award. This recognition was for his accomplishments in social media. Mark has done a wonderful job here as our marketing director. He produces the uniquely Bristol show every month. Of those of you that haven't seen it, I would definitely suggest that you take a look at it, either on Bristol All Heart website or on Facebook. Mark does a fantastic job this month. I believe they're doing early childhood and also getting ready to sell or buy a home, because it is selling and buying home, and that season is here. So I would suggest that you go and see Mark and see some of the work he does. And we want to congratulate him on the fine job he's doing.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to announcements, Councilman Maderos.
There's a workshop coming up called Subsidence Effects on the 14 to 24-year-old adolescent brain. It's led by Dr. Ruth Poti. It's going to be held Thursday, May 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Doubletree Hotel. It's free to anyone who lives or works in Bristol. And you just need to register by April 21st. And then, secondly, the Young Professional Group Pivot. They're holding a happy hour event on April 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Timeout Sports and Pizza Bar. That's free to Pivot members, or $20 admission for any non-members.
Councilman Mills?
Yeah, I have a couple. First, I'd like to congratulate the Bristol Tramps on their 48th annual program last week. They had a dinner last Friday night, very successful. I congratulate all of the honorees. There was over 300 people at their event at the Aquiturf. They did a wonderful job, as they usually do. And then, secondly, the annual duck race is coming up. And for those of you that haven't bought tickets yet, the tickets are $5. If you want to know where the locations are, you can go to the Poclock River Duck Race Facebook page, and they will tell you where the tickets are. It's an event that is usually well-attended in Forestville Center. And all the proceeds are... It's a little different this year. Normally, it was the Forestville Village Association and the Chamber. This year, it's going to be the Chamber and several other organizations. So again, I encourage you to buy your tickets. And please go to the website and check it out.
Thank you. Councilman Mills?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few. Tomorrow night, the Legion is hosting a benefit for the Warriors Horse Project. It's tomorrow night, the Legion, from 8:00 till 10:00. And what the project does is, it helps with equine therapy for veterans with post-traumatic stress and some traumatic brain injuries. So that's a great cause for our local veterans. From the Chamber, there's a couple of things I'd like to announce. One is, on April 30th at the Doubletree, the Chamber is having a small business appreciation breakfast. They're honoring several small businesses who are great community members, including our Valley's Shoe Repair, The Basket Place, Crystal Diner, Rosie's Laundry Company, and Haberfeld Enterprises. The guest speaker that morning will be Tom Barnes, who's the chairman of the Barnes Group. In addition, one of the Chamber's initiatives is workplace development. And I'd like to give a shout-out, Your Honor, to Cindy Bombard, who's the executive director of the Chamber. She's been working with Tungus Community College and our Bristol Adult Education in workforce development and bringing manufacturers together with educators. And on April 25th, at Tungus, at 7:45 in the morning, they're having a roundtable where local businesspeople can talk to manufacturers and what the needs are for the workplace. local businesspeople can talk to manufacturers and what the needs are for the workplace, as well as, Tungus is coming out with an advanced manufacturing program in August. And this is critical to meet the needs of our local employers and also provide an avenue, if you will, for some of our kids who are talented in the manufacturing trades and who, there are a lot of good jobs out there for these guys. So they're pulling that all together, and it'll be a roundtable on the 25th. I think that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Excuse me, Your Honor. Can I just add to that, because it's part of a report that I was going to give, and I just want to add about two seconds, or two sentences to it, if I may. Just as a caveat, one of the things that's available, there's over 13,000 jobs in Connecticut that are manufacturing and trades jobs that are going unmet right now. So that's part of the reason that this program is being put together, and we want to, the part of the marketing committee is to come up with a program to start publicizing this fact, to come up with a means to get this information out to people, so these jobs can become met. So David, thank you for doing the preamble to that, and that's just a little caveat there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys need to coordinate your reports.
I think so.
Councilman Fortier.
We're celebrating lots of things as we get into spring, and this April also marks the 15th Annual National Donate Life Month, a celebration commemorating those who have given the gift of life through organ and tissue donation. For those whose lives have been saved or healed by a transplant, National Donor Life Month provides a chance to share their story, to encourage more people to register as donors. And this evening, before our meeting, we had a flag raising outside, actually just outside the police complex, and with the mayor and others, and the Donate Life flag was raised in honor of Donate Life Month. And several local families participated who have benefited from organ transplant, including Steve Casey, our former state senator, the Davies family, the Regani family, Morris DeShane, and Sandy Contarellio.
Contarelli.
Contarelli, excuse me. They were all present, raising the flag, and the Regani daughter was our flag raiser. She's also a member of the youth cabinet. So again, if folks would like to register to be donies, there is a website, registermee.org for anybody who's interested in that. And take a look at the flag when you're going by next, outside. Thank you. I have one more announcement. On Friday, June 8th, the Salute Dinner, the annual dinner that recognizes our young people that are heading off to the military, both military services as well as the military academies, will be held at Nucci's. That's a Friday night, and tickets are $25 a person, and they're available from Tim Gamache, our own veteran. And his number is 860-977-2152, if you're interested in tickets. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Hahn.
Last Tuesday, the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble had their Pops concert. They put a concert together with the Old Time Fiddlers Club, so I'd like to congratulate those two groups. In the coming month, on May 10th, the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble is going to be putting on a concert at the Bushnell. We've been asked to work with the Travelers Corral, and it is a free concert. If you bring canned goods, you can get into the concert. It's a fine time and a great event, so if you have the time, I recommend it highly. On May 12th, the Bristol Corral has their spring concert, and again, the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble will be playing with them as well jointly. So at this point, I'd like to congratulate Ken Ferris and Rich Theriot for the seasons they put together this year for the community. I know a lot of effort goes into putting these groups together, and they've done a fine job this year. Both of their seasons end in May, and so they deserve the congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly.
Yeah, I would just like to add, insofar as what councilperson Fortier touched on, insofar as organ donations. I've got intimate knowledge of that. My sister Kathy was a living donor. She donated a lobe of her liver to my nephew, Josh. So it's, you know, very important to be involved and register. And aside from that, I have one brief announcement, Mayor. This is the 77th year of the O'M Show, which is a local variety show sponsored by the older members of Bristol Boys and Girls Clubs. And the proceeds from the show will be used for programs and services in the club. This year is a Disney theme, and the show is April 20th and 21st at St. Paul Catholic. The times are 7:30 on both Friday and Saturday, with an additional matinee at 1:30 on Saturday. Tickets are $20 for reserved seats and 15 for general admission. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two brief announcements. The first one is that today, as of 5:17, I was notified that we closed on the Bristol Hospital property on the corner of Riverside and Main Street. So I think that, as many of you know, this is a process that has gone on for quite a bit of time, over several administrations. At times, it definitely resembled an embroilio, and we weren't quite sure how it was going to end up, but today was a very important day. And I'd like to just recognize Attorney Tom Conlin, who has done yeoman's work on ensuring that the, literally, it seemed like thousands of easements, especially from Everstore, were dealt with in an appropriate manner. And I don't think that we could have gotten there today without the Corporation Council's office complete efforts. So thank you for all of your attention to those details. We have our first sale, and hopefully that this is the beginning of many more. Also, for the record, I just wanted to let everybody know, in case you did not see the special council meeting agenda for yesterday. We visited and did a site appraisal for 10 Main Street, which has been offered last year as an answer to the RFP, when the last administration went out for requests for proposals on what to do about City Hall. As you know, we have some future, hopefully, parking issues if the site is developed across the street. We have some long-term maintenance issues within this building, and the discussion was had, and the decision was made to seek RFPs, to see if there was any other 60,000 square worth of space anywhere in downtown that would be appropriate for a City Hall. That is on our executive session tonight as a negotiated discussion, but I thought it was important for the council and some of our department heads, who had not been there, to have a visual assessment of that property. So that took place yesterday from about 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, and I think that we're all in a better position to have a conversation about that, now that we've been in that building. So those are my two announcements. And if nobody, yes, and my third announcement is that on Wednesday, May 9th, the West End Association is going to be hosting an official public hearing, sponsored by the Department of Transportation, for the discussion about the Route 72 and Route 69 realignment intersection project. So this is critical for stakeholders to avail themselves of that public hearing process and get more information about where that project stands. That will be held at the Riverview Apartments and their community room at 7:00. For those of you who may not have accessed Riverview and attended meetings there, they now have a parking lot on the opposite side of the building on Laurel Street that you can park in the visitor parking and just cross the street and enter by the main gates that are to the left. So hopefully, if anybody's interested in the status of that project, we will see you on Wednesday, May 9th, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the consent.
There are eight items on the consent calendar. 5A is to place on file the new hire report for March 2018. 5B is to accept the annual report from the Bristol Storm Water Control Trust for calendar year 2017. 5C is to place on file the recommendation from the Water Department regarding the discontinuance of a portion of Willis Street between South Street and Memorial Boulevard. 5D is to approve the tax refunds dated April 2nd, 2018. 5E is to approve the construction of a driveway and parking field on Lot 220-1, Willis Street, over the city's sewer main, under the terms and requirements of the deed in Bristol Land Records, Volume 1050, page 972. Item 5F is to place on file the Planning Commission Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-24, referral regarding approval to relocate a stormwater easement on 27 Sharon Street and 28 Sharon Street. 5G is to place on file the Planning Commission Connecticut General Statutes, Section 824, referral regarding approval to relocate a stormwater easement on 150 Sherwood Road. And 5H is to place on file the Planning Commission Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-24, referral regarding approval to discontinue a portion of Willis Street between South Street and Memorial Boulevard.
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Committee reports is next.
Okay. We'll start with Salary Committee.
Yes, thank you. The item says to add the position of System Application Specialist, BPSA, Salary Code 9, $73,824 to $90,484 effective July 1st, 2018, and refer to the Board of Finance. Just by way of explanation, this is a position in our MIS department, which is our Information Technology section. And this represents an overhire, meaning someone that's planning to retire at the end of the year in December. We would be hiring someone ahead of time, so that they could work with the person that's currently there and work on our Munis system, which is more complicated than I can understand, but basically the software that controls all our data here in the city, that makes our spreadsheets and does our budgeting and lots of other things. And so the comptroller recommended that we do an overhire here, that we authorize this position for six months, so that we can improve our effectiveness, especially with the Munis system. And this is one of the things that was recommended to us coming out of the audit of the Board of Ed financial situation, when they had a deficit. One of the things that the auditor said is that the city, on both sides, the city and the Board of Education, don't use Munis to its full potential, and we can have a lot of information at our fingertips if we're better able to understand Munis. So that's why we're recommending this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we'll move to the Ordinance Committee.
Mayor, I have a ordinance, a motion that is designed to present Agenda Items 6B through H. I hereby move that the following sections of the Code of Ordinances be amended to read as follows. Section 6-21 of Voting Precincts, Section 6-34 of the Voting Precincts, 6-35 of the Boundaries of Voting Precincts ordinances. Second is Sections 2-146 through 2-150, Establishment of the City Arts and Culture Commission. Third, Section 17-20, 17-22, 17-32, 17-33, 17-34, 17-35, 17-39, 17-40, and 17-85 of the Peddlers, Solicitors, Canvassers, and Itinerant Vendors Ordinances. Next is Section 5-57, Assessors Authorization to Freeze Assessments of Rehabilitated Property Ordinances. Next, Section 10-15, Prohibition of Storage, Disposal, or Use of Fracking Waste Ordinances. Next, Section 23-3, Appeals of Citation Hearing Officers Ordinances. And lastly, Sections 21-141 through 21-145, Acceptance of Certain Non-Conforming Roadway Ordinances. I further move that the city clerk publish set amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. Your Honor, we had seven public hearings. The Ordinance Committee, I want to thank councilmembers Maderos and Mills, and I also want to thank, heartfelt thanks to Attorney Conlin. Some of these, we've been working on some of these ordinances for a number of years. I'm open to any questions members may have, but we recommend them to you.
I do have one question. I'm familiar with most of these changes, but the one that is 6D, referencing peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers, that's somewhat of an archaic term. What are we correcting there? Is that just the licensing and permitting?
Permitting and licensing. We're shifting that to the Police Department.
Okay.
By request.
Any other questions or comments? And a second would be appropriate?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so this is actually, with this vote, in 14 days, these go into effect?
Yes.
Councilman Hahn, is there anything you'd like to add to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism ordinance?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the mayor's task force that got together over the last few months and put a huge amount of effort into the formation of the ordinance and presenting it to the Ordinance Committee. Would it be appropriate to make the nominations at this point?
Well, we can do this vote, and then we can have that moved up on the agenda, if you're so inclined.
I would like, I'd like to make a motion to move that up.
Okay, so let's first take care of the motion that is on the table, which is to approve the ordinances as presented by Councilman Proleski. Any further comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Hahn, is there a motion you'd now like to bring to the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the following people to the Seven Person Commission for Arts, Culture, Jesse Gallagher, Lindsay Vigue, Samantha Cludier, Kim Valenti, William Stortz, and Juliette Norton. Second.
So, thank you. I'd like to, yeah.
Can we just tweak that a little to be made effective upon?
Right, I was going to take care of that. So these nominations are effective upon the date, the ordinance goes into effect 14 days from date of publication. And I do believe that several of our new commission members are here with us tonight, if they would care to stand and be recognized. So for those of you who may not know the people who are now going to be in charge of our Arts, Culture, and Tourism, Jesse Gallagher, who has run many events at the Ingram House and is also very involved in music. We have Lindsay Vigue, who is a photographer, also a supporter of all things art and culture in Bristol. We have Samantha Cludier, who's one of our new millennials, who actually works for a corporation, who we are hopefully going to tap for lots of money to support our efforts. Kim Valente, who is a fine artist, I thought I saw come, oh, there she is, Kim's here, and also very involved in marketing and putting forward the proposals and was on the MBS Task Force as well. We all know Mayor Stortz, who's in the back of the room, who attends just about every event that happens and knows everything that's going on, and is going to help us get the word out, as well as increase community pride through those efforts. And Julie Norton in the back, I don't think there's a name that's better associated with tourism in Bristol than that of the Norton family and Lake compounds. So I think all of you have a great charge. You've already heard from our announcements tonight. There is a lot going on in Bristol, and it's your job now to promote all of that, to tie that together, and to have this be a very vital place and vibrant place for those who already live and work here, as well as attracting those from the area to come to Bristol for all that we have to offer. So again, we do have one vacancy on this commission. We are waiting for our seventh name, and you may hear that at the May meeting, if not sooner. But for now, to the six of you, thank you for your commitment to date, and we look forward to working for you and providing the resources that you need to do the job of this commission. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, can we get a vote on that?
Sure. All in favor of the names presented?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Terice.
Thank you.
Back to our committees, we're now up to real estate.
Your Honor, I have a motion. I hereby move that the city of Bristol accept the offer from Nicholas Acres and Magdalene Kanye in the amount of $18,001 for the city-owned property known as 384 Fall Mountain Road, Lot 56A, on map 10 of the Bristol Assessor's Office. Said property to be merged with the property purchasers, property known as 386 Fall Mountain Road. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents, and I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Mills has the next one.
Yes, I have the next motion. I hereby move that the city of Bristol requests...
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion carries?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I hereby move that the city of Bristol seek requests for proposals for the disposition of property owned by the city, known as 23 Monchhausen Avenue, Lot Number 230, map 30, the Bristol Assessor's map, and that the purchasing agent be authorized, excuse me, I have to scroll down here, to request proposals, and that he send out a press release in addition to the legal notice... press release in addition to the legal notices and update the city website. I hereby move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
There is a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, before I make the following motions, I'd like to mention that the Real Estate Committee has taken more of an aggressive stance in being able to market those properties that we have for development. We're working with brokers, and in this particular case, we have a situation where we did receive bids, but we did counteroffer, and as a result, we've sold the property or hoped to sell the property for more money, and this aggressive stance is gonna carry through to try to get the following, the other properties moving as well. So, the Real Estate Committee is doing a fine job there. I hereby move that the city of Bristol accept the offer from Francis Porini in the amount of twenty-one thousand for city-owned property known as one thirty-two George Street on map thirty-one of the Bristol Assessor's Office. Said purchaser shall apply for a building permit within twelve months of closing. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Okay. So, we're gonna put that motion on hold for one moment because first, we need to bring it onto the table, because that has come from the special real estate meeting of earlier tonight. So, is, there are two, the Real Estate Committee has been very busy. So, is there a motion to bring the two items from today's special real estate meeting onto the floor for consideration tonight?
So moved.
Okay, we need a two-thirds vote to bring onto the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, back to the motion that you've just made. Was that a second, Councilman Kelly, or who was making that, Councilman Fordier?
Second.
Okay, so that first motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion, Councilman Han.
I hereby move that the city of Bristol accept the offer from Francis J. Porini in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for city-owned property known as one forty-seven Hull Street on map thirty-one of the Bristol Assessor's Office. Said purchaser shall apply for a building permit within twelve months of closing. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Okay. Discussion of that motion. I have one. The inclusion of the building permit timeline, is that new? Is that something that we've started to do?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I like that.
Thank you.
I mean, I think when we go through these different real estate situations, it's important that we keep track of them. I think one of the issues that we've had is the backlog of these properties that we've lost track of. So, anything that we can do to spur development, because otherwise, the entire process is meretricious, and it just doesn't make sense if we're not tracking them and getting them back on the tax rolls. So, I think that's a great inclusion of that motion.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else from the Real Estate Committee tonight?
So, Kestickly.
Okay. Hearing none, we will go to our other committee, well, actually Charter Revision. I do have a Charter Revision report from the commission. I did attend their meeting last week. They are still covering quite a few items. I thought I saw Craig Minor come in. When's your next meeting?
Uh, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so April twenty-fourth is the next meeting of Charter Revision at the library?
Yes.
Okay. So, there is still time for people to go to the Charter Revision and suggest changes that you think might make government work more efficient. But currently, the update is that they are still in discussions and looking for information on what would it mean to move sewer operations from the purview of Public Works into Water Department. The second issue is they're still examining the possibility of staggering terms for the Board of Education members, so as to not risk losing all of the board's institutional knowledge and experience in any one given election. This conversation has now spurred a discussion of possibly extending terms of office for elected officials from two years to four years, at least for the mayor, but also possibly city councilors, and they strongly encourage city councilors, past and present, to attend the next Charter Revision meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, at seven, at the library, in order to offer feedback on that matter. The fourth issue is that they're looking at specific changes to be made to the charter which can enable the city council to hold elected officials accountable for adhering to the city's personnel policies and procedures, as well as ethical guidelines. And I believe right now, that has become an enforcement issue that they're currently mulling over. The fifth one is that they have tentatively accepted proposed revisions to the charter language, which came from the city's Bond Council, and which has now been reviewed by the Board of Finance and the Comptroller. They have declined to recommend changes to the charter regarding language, which speaks to sidewalk repairs, and they are now just beginning to study how the charter compares to those of other municipalities in regard to department head listings and job duty descriptions being within the charter. So, again, a plea from them to encourage members of the public to attend the meetings, and there is public participation at all of them. So, that's the report from Charter Revision. And in terms of the opioid task force, we had our initial meeting last month. We had almost thirty people in the room representing a variety of backgrounds. We had a lot of discussion about personal stories. We have a lot of people who have a lot of different talents that are coming to the table. We had ten areas that, by the end of our two-hour meeting, that we have discussed, and those areas of concern that we're going to be focusing on at our next meeting include the creation of a resource library, common language, which is an identification of terms, because a lot of what's being talked about, people don't really understand the terms and what they mean, and what the meaning is behind some of the definitions involved with everything, from the drug piece to recovery terms. Prevention and education is one of the key areas. Monitoring legislative policy. Alternative therapies was discussed. Also, data tracking, which is critical, not only for us to understand the community issues, but also in order to get grants, so that we can define what that community need is. Access to insurance is a huge issue, which we think has a community education component. The issue of recovery in general, the issue of peer and family support. And again, back to data, everybody's concerned about the real number of deaths from opioid use. So, from that, we have spent the last couple of weeks amassing information within those areas, and I actually did want to ask Chief Gould to come quickly to the podium, because he has, is part of our opioid task force, and actually, as part of his Chiefs Association, has a program that I quickly spoke with Dr. Moreau about this afternoon, that we are excited to hopefully launch in Bristol, maybe in conjunction with all the schools individually, or maybe as part of the high school orientation program.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City of Bristol. Yeah, this is actually hot off the press today. Attended the Kappa Region Chiefs of Police Association meeting, and one of the items that came up was part of our Connecticut Chiefs of a Police Association, we have what is called an opiate response committee, and out of this committee came a program called the Opiate Talk. And the philosophy behind this is getting chiefs and other police personnel into our schools, focusing on eighth graders, and there's a couple of highlights here. So, this is really a proposal that I shared with the mayor today and was shared with the superintendent. And really, it's to get an officer and the chief of police into every eighth-grade student and discuss opiate and the transition into high school, so it's got a dual purpose. We utilize a PowerPoint that's been put together. It's been vetted through the Chiefs of Police Association, as well as the state's attorney's office, and we're gonna be discussing many topics, and one of them is the dangers of the new opiate epidemic. We're gonna be discussing the pressures and choices of transforming from middle to high school, and one of the neat parts of this program is identifying a high school student that stands out, that will come in and assist myself or another officer in the presentation of this program. And what he or she is gonna do is provide some positive, real-life experiences on what he or she has been doing in the high school level to stay away from these dangers. So, that's it in a nutshell. It involves that quick PowerPoint program. And just to give an example, some studies have shown that four out of ten teens see prescription drugs as less dangerous as heroin, yet many heroin addicts report that they started out abusing prescription painkillers during their teen years, and then switched to heroin because it provided much the same effects at a lower cost. So, it's so important that we get out and we talk to our youth, and I will commit to you that if we can get this program going, that I believe we can get it into our eighth grade classrooms, and I would like to do it as soon as possible. In fact, when we talked to the mayor today, that's why I'm up here tonight, and I will commit to you that, does anybody have any idea how many eighth graders we have, by the way, before I make this commitment?
[laughing]
I will commit to you that I will, I will make it a personal responsibility to get in there, and I can have this done for these current eighth graders going into the high school now. So, I think it's a worthwhile cause, and we should move on it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Okay. Moving on to committee reports by council members, starting on my far left.
Sure. I just have a couple of quick announcements from Parks Board and also the Police Commission. I'll start with Parks. This Friday, the thirteenth, the Des Moines Aquatic Center is holding a water carnival from six to eight P.M. The pool's gonna be filled with inflatable water games and activities, and admission is five dollars. And then also, another spring event, the sixty-seventh Annual Perry J. Spinelli Fishing Derby is scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-first, from seven A.M. at Page Park. The event is for ages thirteen and under, so please check the BristolRec.com website for details on that event. And then, despite the weather we've been having, the summer is kind of around the corner. The program brochure is available now online, and will be mailed to households on April twenty-seventh. Program and camp registration begins May fourteenth, and they fill pretty quickly. As far as the Police Commission goes, the Police Department receives state reaccreditation, which is great. They've also had a successful event back on March twenty-first, which was Coffee with a Cop. They partnered at Starbucks and were there throughout the morning. They plan on continuing this initiative at different times throughout the day, and future dates are gonna be announced in the coming days. Also, two recruits recently graduated from the Police Academy on March twenty-eighth, and they have just begun their field training program. And then finally, this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, so we'd like to acknowledge and thank our public safety dispatchers for all the work that they do in keeping us safe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mills?
I kind of gave my report very quickly with, I'm piggybacking on Dave, so I'll have no report.
Thank you. Councilman Proleski? Councilman Fordier?
I just have one, which happens to be another fishing derby. Pine Lake has their own fishing derby every year, and this year, it's going to be on Saturday, May twelfth. It's from eight to noon, and it's for ages six to fifteen. There are prizes for different categories, and there's actually little drawings throughout the morning, so that everyone that comes gets something. Lots of accessories for fishing among the prizes, and that is rain or shine, or snow, I guess.
Councilman Han?
For the Bristol Housing Authority, I have just a couple of things. Bristol Housing Authority grant applications for the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, FSS, and the Resident Opportunities and Self-Sufficiency Program, ROS, have been approved by HUD. These grants will allow the continuation of services to enable families to increase their earned income and reduce their dependency on welfare assistance and rental subsidies. The ROS grant will be used by BHA to partner with the Boys and Girls Club of Bristol to provide such services to families in the federal program. Then also, in March, the Board of Commissioners approved the Bristol Housing Authority Agency Plan and the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for federal sites. For the Bristol Senior Center and the Commission on Aging, the community garden plot sales began on April sixth. Ground plots are twenty dollars for the season, and raised beds are ten dollars for the season. Plots can be purchased at the Senior Center in the main office weekdays between eight-thirty A.M. and five P.M. Also, an American Red Cross blood drive will be held at Senior Center on April eighteenth from eleven A.M. to four P.M. To make an appointment, please contact the American Red Cross, and the number is eight-hundred red cross. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you. I have a school readiness report, and many things are happening, and thank you, Councilman Mills, for referencing the Uniquely Bristol, which features the school readiness this month. I've seen it, and Mary Alice does a great job with all the grants. Tonight at the library, the kindergarten and pre-K teachers are meeting at their annual dine and discuss. I'd normally be there, but I'm here. The guest speaker is Corey Nagel, Bristol's two thousand fourteen Teacher of the Year, and Mr. Nagel is not only an outstanding teacher, he's also an author and illustrator of children books, and his books are based in nature and science, and he will be sharing with pre-K and kindergarten teachers how you can take a story from oral telling to written word and using illustrations. He will also share how to publish your students' books with limited printing, and every teacher will receive a signed copy of Mr. Nagel's books, Shapes in Insects, a book for learning shapes. Also, on May first, Art Speaks, which involves all the pre-K programs in Bristol, and they showcase their artwork at the Imagination Museum of Early Learning. And this is in collaboration with the BOE Art Show, Art Speaks, for students from K to twelve, which is held at the Board of Education Building on Church Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Okay. Hearing none. Unfinished business. I do have one motion, and that is, I'll ask someone to make the motion, but I will read it, and it's to disband the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, to send a letter of thanks to the commissioners who have served, and further, to assign responsibility to the purchasing agent for the closeout of remaining contracts relevant to this committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. As we get closer to the fruition of the Arts Magnet School, we need to transition the committees, because it is a state requirement. So, the Inter-District Magnet School Building Committee will take the place of this building committee that has got us to this point, and two members from this committee will also be serving on the new committee to complete that transition. So, this is an administrative item tonight, and the Inter-District Magnet School Building Committee will start its work shortly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. The first item is a request that has come to the mayor's office from a variety of citizens, and it is a request for the city to sign on to the Net Neutrality Pledge, and I did pull it up. As many of you, I'm sure, are aware, it involves the Federal Communication Commission's repeal of its Open Internet Order, which many people have stated, you know, is allowing private internet service providers to be a gatekeeper between residents and local government services, which they depend on every day. So, from the municipal angle, it's something that we're concerned about. There are many people who are starting to get services from the municipality from the internet. We do a lot online, and the fact is, is that it saves us a lot of money to do so. So, one of the issues that this pledge talks about is the city's commitment to ensure open internet connections, and also to ensure that we also, when available, offer free and public Wi-Fi and municipal broadband, which are goals that we are working on, both to make Bristol an attractive place to live and work, but also as an economic development tool. So, a fiber expansion of our network is actually on our Tenure Capital Plan. So, at the request of about eighteen residents, I have placed it on the agenda, and the request is for us to sign what is called the City's Open Internet Pledge. And I believe I sent the link out to the city council members, if anybody has any questions. But the motion would be to authorize me to sign the online pledge.
So moved.
Second. Discussion on the motion for the city of Bristol to authorize me to sign the City's Open Internet Pledge.
Just a brief, this is controversial, obviously. There are some reasons for people not wanting this to happen, and I guess a lot of it has to do with the speed of the technology. What, from what I've- From what I've read about it, there is a motion, or the part of the movement is to make different tiers and levels, obviously, for this, where the people that want to... There'll be a basic level, which everyone will get, and then levels that you'll be able to purchase. So, to be honest, I don't know enough about it.
Okay.
So, I am going to abstain from the vote.
Sure. This ties in remotely with something that we've been monitoring with PURA, which was a very old decision that has been in place for a long time, which allows the city to have space on top of all of the polls. And that is something that has been a municipal right for a very long time. But as technology changes, and the internet changes, and communications change, we have had internet providers and utilities actually looking to revoke that municipal right. And that has been something that we've been monitoring for a few months. And just this past month, we were notified that PURA did remove it from their agenda, and they were not going to file their decision, which was going to be against the city's right to maintain that. So, a lot of this is starting to percolate up, and I think from a municipal standpoint, it's something that we do need to be on top of in terms of understanding its role. From an open access standpoint, I think it's critical that people have the ability to access government, whether it's from the library, which has banks of computers, their own home, be able to afford an affordable ISP and internet provider. So, I'm comfortable with signing the pledge on behalf of the city, and I think it just makes a stand for what I think is going to be a lot of discussion in the future about technology in general. That being said, is there any other conversation or discussion?
I'd just like to mention that the net neutrality, I feel it's important as well because the providers, without it, the providers are going to dictate where we get drawn to. So, in going, trying to go to municipality services, if they can get a sponsor, they can direct you to somewhere that is not the municipality, but get services for a cost. So, these are the kinds of things that we need to guard against. They currently, when you search for an item, you get the search. But when this is fully implemented, and there's no more neutrality, then the providers can dictate what, whoever paid them the most money is where you get to go, is where the search sends you. So, this is important from a variety of standpoints, not just from a municipality standpoint, but from an open internet standpoint and access.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. For Nora. I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining, actually.
Okay. So, are you voting no, or are you abstaining?
No, I'm abstaining.
Okay. So, it's six in favor and one abstention. Okay. And thanks to technology, I'm submitting it as we speak. Okay. Moving on to resignations.
And we have one...
Oh, sorry. Sorry. New business. Anybody else?
I do.
If it's no, I'm abstaining.
Councilman Felaski?
Thank you, mayor. You know, I just want to speak to an issue that popped up this weekend. On Saturday, we were, it was brought to our attention that a very longtime member of our business community did a post on social media that they're having a very difficult financial time. It came to my attention from Councilman Kelly. What I want the people of Bristol to know is, on Sunday, the mayor, Councilman Kelly, and I met with the owners. We tried to be responsive, to show support to our business leaders and our business owners, that the city's behind them and we listen. We spent a couple hours with the owners, and we wanted to get our arms around what we thought was a very difficult post for them, if you can imagine. And we spent time to learn about their situation. And since that meeting, Sunday night and yesterday, through the offices of Mr. Malley from the Bristol Development Authority, and our own business relationships, we've tried to reach out to the financial world to see what alternatives we can assist with for what we think is a very important member of our business community. That one location brings between 300 and 600 people a day downtown. And as you know how we're trying to sell Bristol, we're trying to sell downtown, we think that's pretty important. Well, the mayor was very supportive with us in terms of what we chose as initiatives. We spent time, again, Mr. Malley and I spent, and the mayor, excuse me, we spent another hour and a half with one of the owners today, with, using some of our connections in Hartford in some alternative financing. I bring this up to just highlight that we really try to be responsive to our small business owners, and we really try to make sure they know, and any business owner in Bristol knows that, we will be responsive, we will use our resources, we will use our experiences in life and our business experiences to back up business. And we're hopeful that we can help. We will open every door that we can, and I think that's important. Thank you, mayor.
This is a difficult situation. You know, just ironically, on the day that we close on the Bristol Hospital property, we're also faced with, you know, a family-owned business that has had a very tumultuous couple of years. And I know that it's very easy for people to take to the internet and talk about how their sandwich wasn't right, but at the end of the day, this is a business that has donated charitably across the community, has shown up every day, and worked 14 to 16 hours a day. And no business is perfect. And I think one of the community pride points that I really think we need to work on is that it's so much easier to sit behind a keyboard and make comments, as opposed to getting in your car and going to the small business and maybe supporting them. Maybe you've never been there, maybe you go there every day anyway. But I think it's important for them to know that in a time where they've suffered two family deaths, they've moved locations, they've purchased real estate in downtown, that instead of talking about their poor condiment choice, we go there and we show them that that restaurant is important and that they have value. So, for anybody watching or anybody that's here, if you do have plans and you're looking to meet a friend this week, I would suggest that you try to stop at Supernatural and let them know that we're all in this together. And if we do want eating establishments, and we want small businesses, especially family-owned businesses, to thrive, that we need to support them, in the good times and in the bad. Thank you. New business from the send?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we can go to resignations.
And there is one resignation, your honor. It's David Scott Jr. from the Board of Education.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thanks.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're up to appointments, and I have several. The first two important ones are staff appointments, and the first one is to reappoint Robyn Manuel from the Controller's Office, the Assistant Controller position, a four-year term until April of 2022.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Robyn. And the second one is Justin Malley, our Executive Director at the Bristol Development Authority, four-year term, again, to April of 2022.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Justin. Now to our volunteer boards and commissions. To appoint Susan Han to replace Abby Kelly on the Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS. This is a mayor's appointment. There is no term. The next one is Freedom of Information Advisory Board. To appoint Ed Dudko to replace Teresa Ferrera, resigned, an unexpired term to January of 2019.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ed. Inland Wetlands Commission, which is a mayor's appointment, to appoint Sebastian Panietto to replace Mike Sammon as a regular member, unexpired term to May of 2019.
Second.
It's a mayor's appointment.
Sorry.
Board of Park Commissioners, to reappoint Robert Fiorito, a three-year term to December of 2020. You can second that one, Councilman.
I will gladly second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Parking Authority, to reappoint Michael Petosa, three-year term to April of 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To appoint Patricia Bowden, three-year term to April of 2021, Bristol Parking Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Stormwater Trust, to appoint Sean Dunn to replace Thomas Smith, who moved out of town, an unexpired term to July of 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pine Lake Study Committee, to appoint Christopher DeMora to replace Carmen Morton.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Mayor's Opioid Task Force, to appoint Cynthia Patronio-Vasquez to serve on the advisory panel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. I'll turn the agenda calling over to our city clerk.
Award of Contract 201881: Permanent Patching of Utility Trenches in City Streets to Martin LaVieiro Contractor, Incorporated, for $48,790 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, Award of Contract 201882: Sidewalk Repair Program to Martin LaVieiro Contractor, Incorporated, for $112,350 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, Award of Contract 201883: Bituminous Concrete Kerbing to Martin LaVieiro Contractor, Incorporated, for $77,625 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 14, Award of Contract 2C-1886: Cleaning and Sealing of Cracks in Asphalt Pavements to Connecticut Seal Coating LLC for $89,400 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 15, Award of Contract 2C-1887: Storm Drainage Ferraro Drive to Shrub Road to RR Hiltbrand Construction LLC for $212,460 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 16, Authorization for Mayor Ellen A. Zappo-Sasu or Acting Mayor to Execute Memorandum of Understanding with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture Concerning the Bristol Farmers' Market.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 17, Resolution to Approve and Submit Grant Application to the Connecticut State Library for the Historic Documents Preservation Grant Program 2019 for a back scan of the land records in the Town Clerk's Office, and there is a resolution to read.
Councilman Fordier?
Do have the resolution, your honor. Resolved that Ellen A. Zappo-Sasu, Mayor of the City of Bristol, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an historic documents preservation grant for the Bristol Town Clerk's Office. Be it further resolved that Ellen A. Zappo-Sasu, Mayor of the City of Bristol, is empowered to execute any and all other documents relating to this application/grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the resolution. Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Item 18, Award of Contract 2C-1888: Storm Drainage Lexington Street to WW Manchester Construction Company, Incorporated, for $110,545.20 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the executive sessions, of which we have several, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I believe that you have some information for us.
Yes. I would ask the council to, for a motion to postpone until our next meeting. Item 21, Executive Session to Discuss Foreclosure Matter of City of Bristol versus Dolores Hudak et al.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion on the request to postpone from Corporation Council. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would you, do you have an order that you'd like to take these?
Yeah. I saw that Attorney Bartlett was here, so we could take item 20 next. That is the, to discuss the Board of Education workers' compensation matter of Patricia Lavoy.
And who will be going in with us?
Be, just the Attorney Bartlett, Richard Bartlett, and myself.
Okay. And then why don't, while you're here, why don't you just run down 22 and 23, well, actually 19, 22 and 23.
Okay. 19, can we keep that till last?
Sure.
Okay. And who, do you have anyone you'd like to attend to that? I mean, besides myself?
The Controller is still here, Diane Waldron, and the purchasing agent.
Okay. The item involving the Walmarts, 22 and 23, I'd like Attorney Conlon to accompany in for that one, those two. And is that it?
22 and 23?
22 and 23, right. Those are tax matters. I think that's it.
Okay. So, at this point, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session. We are going to take Agenda Item 20 first, and then do 22 and 23, and then we will come back to 19. Do we need to make a motion to that effect?
A motion to go in, yes.
Well, do we have to worry about the order?
No.
Okay.
Motion to go into executive session for items 19 through 23, exclusive of 21.
Okay. Second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will adjourn at 8:21 into executive session, and we'll reconvene hopefully shortly. Motion carries. We are back in the executive session. Are there any motions to come before the city council?
There are.
Would somebody like to make said motion?
I'll make a motion. I don't know if it matters, the order, but I hereby move that the matter of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust et al. versus City of Bristol Superior Court, docket number CV-HHB-17-6037443-S, be resolved by stipulation to judgment, and that the assessor be authorized to adjust the assessment on the subject property at a value of $10,350,000 for the 2012 grand list, with any tax overpayments being credited to future tax obligations. The Corporation Council is authorized to execute the stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I've got a motion. I hereby move that the matter of the Walmart Stores East LP et al. versus City of Bristol Superior Court, docket CV-HHB-17-6037447-S, be resolved by stipulation to judgment and that the assessor be authorized to adjust the assessment on the subject property at a value of $5.4 million for 2012 grand list and at a value of $3.5 million for the 2017 grand list, with any tax overpayments being credited to future tax obligations. The Corporation Council is authorized to execute the stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Okay.
I hereby move to approve the stipulation for full and final settlement in the matter of Patricia Lavoy versus the City of Bristol and PMA Management Corp. of New England. Claim number W001564337, in the amount of $37,500, and to authorize counsel for the City of Bristol to execute any and all necessary documents.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.